So now we're gonna have a discussion regarding the update of the town planning and zoning, I mean, town plan of conservation and development. Ah, Mr. Looney. Welcome.
Okay, for the record, Michael Looney.
We're in the back wondering if you've got approved them and I just told them to leave.
Well, we approved it. I don't know, it's so funny, but I just think people just like to stay here and hang out. Sorry about that. Good call, Chris. You've gotten in trouble for that, you know.
I know.
Again, for the record, Michael Looney, Associate Principal Planner with the firm Mylon and McBroom of Cheshire, Connecticut. Sort of a continuation of our meeting and discussion last week. We have a couple of additional draft chapters of the P O C D to kind of run through tonight. And we have all the comments from our meeting on the 25th that we're working to incorporate into the sections, the chapters that we presented at that time. So we're still putting those together. What we'd like to do, I believe we're meeting again next week on the 9th, is kind of have our wrap-up session at that point so that we could get fully prepared for the public workshop on the night of September 30th. So if there aren't any preliminary questions, I could just quickly go through these. Not gonna spend a whole lot of time on the going over the specific language in the chapters themselves. I kind of want to focus more on the goals and objectives that we have at the end of the chapters. I think a good one to start with is Chapter 2, which is the Village and Economic Development Chapter. That's actually a chapter we discussed last week at our meeting when we had just had it as the Economic Development Chapter. And so the feeling was that we would, because there's so much overlap between what goes on in the village and the overall economic development of the town, that we combine those two chapters into one, which is what we've been working on, one of the things we've been working on this week. So again, a lot of the information that we have in here is very much the information that we presented earlier in our fact books as we were going through the process of analyzing the town's economy. And once we get to about page, I want to say page 10, with the Economic Development Action Plan, these again are essentially the same items that we presented last week at our meeting in terms of the different ongoing actions, near-term, midterm, and long-term action agenda items for developing the economy of the town. What we've done after that is integrated our sort of Woodbridge Village Action Plan. We had done a presentation earlier in the summer specifically about the village. So we have our graphic, our Village District Conceptual Plan.
Okay, can we, can we stay on the Economic Development Action Plan first?
Okay, sure.
Okay. I have some comments. One is maintain regular contact with business community. I think there should be some actual wording there that actually refers to home businesses.
Okay.
And who are we suggesting maintains this regular contact?
That would be a combined effort with the next action step, the first near-term action agenda item of creating sort of a part-time Economic Development Director working with the Economic Development Commission.
Okay, so that, not quite clear, but okay. So maybe we can work on that.
Okay.
But going to the next thing where it says create this Economic Development Directorship. Hire a part-time Economic Development Director to facilitate ongoing communication and coordination with Woodbridge businesses, perhaps overlapping with a part-time planner. So I, that's, that actually is a description of Economic Development Commission.
Okay.
And so I think that this person, if we're hiring this person, should really be the person to promote Woodbridge outside of Woodbridge's to businesses that want to come into Woodbridge.
So more of a business-
I think we're trying to build some kind of a-
More of a business recruitment.
-economic base here. So I think that's important because the Economic Development Commission is constantly talking to businesses down there, so.
All right, we can make those changes, sure.
"A lead continuing business recruitment and development towards achieving a desirable mix of goods and services in town." I'm not actually sure what that is either, because I think we're just looking for businesses. I mean, obviously, we don't want, I mean, I get it, we don't want to encourage manufacturing to move into town, but I don't think any manufacturing happens here anyway.
Mm-hmm.
So I think, you know, retailing.
Yeah, our thinking with that was not to get too heavy into one particular sector and trying to have a mix of different economic uses so that when you do have, you know, a particular market going through a correction, having, you know, maybe a downturn, you have other businesses that can sort of compensate for that rather than having all your eggs in one basket, so to speak.
No, I agree about the mix. I'm, I'm not sure someone's gonna do that.
Okay.
I want to, I guess what I'm, I mean, I don't know what the rest of the commission feels like. I'm a little concerned that there could be some things that are written in here that suddenly start stubbing people's toes when they decide to do something. They say, well, your P O C D says, you know, desirable mix, and we don't think this is a desirable mix. But really, our purpose was just to develop, increase economic businesses.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay, the other thing, Advocate for Solutions to Transportation Needs. The second one, it says, "Consult with Woodbridge Village occupants on expanding sidewalks and wayfinding to the benefit of businesses and customers." I'm not really sure why we're gonna be consulting Woodbridge Village occupants, because we're putting the sidewalks in for everybody. And that's one of those things I think we're kind of almost putting blinders on, saying, okay, we're gonna require sidewalks here, and then all of a sudden, half the people from the Woodbridge Village show up here and say, we don't want any more sidewalks because now we're required to shovel them.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't, I don't actually think, I think we should be careful about that.
Okay.
Feel free to disagree with me if you want to disagree. Okay, fine.
We're just listening.
Okay, fine. I had a little trouble, I have a feeling you, it was in here, but then it wasn't clear. So if I'm repeating something that's in here, feel free to say, Jeff, it's already in there.
Okay.
"Foster a 21st century economy linked to the creative economic sector." Okay, get that. It doesn't, although in the next time, it talks about a little bit larger regional economy. But I, first I wrote in there that we, should we be actually referring to increasing our link to, for instance, Westville? Or should we, I guess, a question kind of, I mean, or should we, maybe not this. I mean, I also put down here, like, the New Haven at the Arts Festival, artists' open studios. I don't know whether that should be listed in here, but it's certainly something that, I mean, maybe that goes to the Economic Development Commission when they're doing this.
Right.
I don't know. I don't, again, I don't want to get so specific that someone comes back and says, well, it says only this and doesn't include this.
Doesn't include this, right. That's why we, you know, we were thinking the same, the same types of organizations and events. That's why we kept the language a little bit more general with regional arts and cultural institutions.
All right. Okay, I agree with that, because, I mean, it also, I mean, I don't say anything about Bethany, but if maybe Bethany's doing something, we would want to go that direction as well.
You might want to just add the word "and events."
Okay, that's fine.
Maybe that gets Jeff where he needs to be.
Thank you. The only thing I had to circle here is, "The Economic Development Director can assist in connecting entrepreneurs to mentors and resources to grow in size, profile, and local impact." Again, I'm thinking that that gets very specific. If the town decides not to engage the services of this part-time person, then we still want to do that, but, so maybe it doesn't refer to the Economic Development Director, but maybe Economic Development Commission.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, and then the only other thing is this map.
Yes.
So it's, it's a Village District Conceptual Plan, but I guess this, I'm not actually getting the line between the Woodbridge Village Action Plan and the Economic Development Action Plan. So I think this map talks about, unfortunately, I don't have this in color. What did I do over here?
You have a color panel that I can do off.
Yeah, oh, actually, I have it on my computer. So you have areas that have potential development. And so where, where's the line? I mean, first of all, I don't understand why the parking lot of, well, I still call it DeAndres Plaza, isn't included in that white line.
Okay, do you mean the whole, the whole thing?
Why wouldn't the whole thing be included?
What we were looking at here was trying to, if you redeveloped this, this particular plaza at some point in the future, that you'd have kind of the uses themselves, the structures being closer to the street front with the parking kind of tucked around in the rear rather than having, let's say, vice versa. So that was more of just of a, kind of a design recommendation, a general design recommendation. Technically, the entire site is an opportunity site.
Yeah, I think the whole thing, because we're kind of like, I think, again, I think we're back to maybe getting too specific about something that somebody could use to stop something good happening.
Okay.
And then, then you have this empty lot on Lucy Street.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm actually thinking that the whole area, I mean, and I, I know the next map talks about the mixed use and the not-mixed use, but if we're changing the zoning regs, our regulations say we want mixed use as opposed to what it says now, doesn't that make almost that whole new area potential development?
Yeah, in theory, in theory, it does. But this property was one that we picked out when we were out in the field as a currently underutilized vacant type lot that, you know, you could either maybe put in some, some off-street parking to help with the businesses on Lucy Street, or put some sort of, some type of infill development. So it was just one that jumped out at us, you know, right near a corner with a, you know, a substantial number of folks passing by every day that could have the potential for, for some type of development, whether it was infrastructure or a new use, new structure.
So, but as far as, I mean, we're making a big deal about this street, we're talking about trees. I think, don't, shouldn't there be something in here that encourages that we want to do these other things on this street? In other words, we're kind of saying, I think, I read this as, we're happy with everything on that street the way it is, except for that one underutilized lot, and we're gonna put trees on it, and it's gonna be a great street. And I don't think the trees are gonna make it a great street. I think it's actually gonna be, if people think this is a good area, to possibly put buildings closer to the street, put their parking behind it, bring in different businesses or additional businesses.
Okay.
So I, and I, so there's nothing in here that says any of that. I mean, if we're trying to make this street the business street where people are gonna be walking and things like that, we're not saying anything on here that says this is how we're gonna do it, other than we're gonna put trees there.
Okay.
So you would include the south side of Lucy Street as well as properties to the west of that part?
Absolutely, I think the worst thing, I mean, I, but again, I'm deferring to you as the planner, but it seems to me we're not telling anybody that this is a good place to come and develop. This doesn't say that we think you should come look at this spot for incubator space, for instance.
Okay.
It doesn't say anything like live workspace, it doesn't say anything about, you know, retail, maybe apartments above kind of thing. It doesn't, it doesn't say any of that.
And when Economic Development did their plan with Professor Platus, they really focused on that whole street, including the corner, turning that into a mixed use, and it's not included.
Okay.
By the dry cleaners?
Yeah, well, there, yeah.
All right.
We actually kept going a little further than the plan, but you were-
It's a little street which is used for commercial that's potential redevelopment.
Yeah.
And I think it does, when you get into the zoning recommendations for changing it to Village Districts.
Okay, so that's, so I did preface it by telling you that.
Yeah.
Saying that. Now, also, then also, why, why aren't we, why aren't we encompassing areas along Amity Road and between-
Further up.
Race, between, between Amity and, is it Selden?
Amity and Selden.
Why aren't we encouraging that as we would like to see some develop? And interestingly enough, we've got Selden Plaza, which is already there.
Mm-hmm.
They're not doing anything. I mean, we're pretty much saying that's the site we want developers to look at, to do something on, and I think if anything, you have a better shot of doing everything on anyplace else on that street except that.
Okay.
So I was just wondering if we should be circling those things as well.
Okay.
And-
Michael, I just wanted to know if this map is actually out of date. You may have been provided it by someone, but I know way up at the, on the left where those four or five white buildings are, there's a building that's about four or five years old that's not shown on it.
Okay.
On the corner of Bradley and Amity.
All right.
So I just wanted you to be aware, it's been there probably four years.
Okay. Well, I'll check the aerial that we used for the base.
Just to let you know.
Bruce, you talk about Bruce Schaefer's new, the Amity Physical Therapy. Yeah, maybe two years.
Well, I think it was just built.
Yeah.
It wasn't, I was the architect, so it wasn't just built.
Yeah, it's a couple of years.
Couple of years, yeah.
It's not four years.
It's probably, I think it was 2009 or 10.
That's how long it took from the design to the build, I guess.
There you go.
All right.
All right. Okay, so that's, that's all I have for-
Okay.
We can skip, go to Woodbridge Village.
Right, for the, the action plan there. We have a, you know, a pretty, pretty long list of ongoing design priorities that I think have been, have been brought up in our discussions and our, and our research about improving intersections, finding ways to get bicycle lanes along key routes, really making Lucy Street more pedestrian-friendly and doing, doing important sidewalk connections, reconfiguring the on- and off-street parking. That, now that I'm thinking about it a second time, that may be more of a, a longer-term action. But there are other things, such as trying to create a link to Nogatuck Trail, which is something that could be an ongoing activity for the town. And again, you know, this sort of ties back to what we were just talking about, about finding new opportunities for appropriately scaled economic development and, in several instances, probably housing as well for a number of different areas and properties that we've sort of preliminarily identified on that map. And to start reaching out, and this is again, probably, this is something that goes on, I imagine, fairly regularly, talking with people in the development community about what additional things could be done to, to attract more high-quality uses to the Village Center and strengthen it that way. Going a little bit more, a little further down the road, I guess the biggest recommendation is this, is our proposed change to the Village Area zoning. And I think there's, there's some, there's quite a bit of confusion about what exactly is the Village District. There's a defined district in terms of how people perceive the area as well as an actual Village District boundary per the state statute. So we would try to link those up and make those coterminous so that we're talking about, everyone's talking about the same area. Developing a uniform architectural review process is something that, that we've spent time talking about, coming up with things such as a, you know, a, a pattern book so that we have a, you know, definite set of standards so everyone understands coming in what types of physical manifestation of development that the town is looking for. The last thing we have, of course, is the, is on the last page, the revised Village zoning. And the area that's sort of a beige color is our proposed Village Mixed Use, while the gray is, would be Village Residential. And we get into that a little bit more in the text in terms of what those, those encompass. But again, it would be expanding the, the current 8-2J statutory definition of the Village District to include some more area. But we think it does a good job of unifying, you know, a number of, of properties and uses that are, that are critical to the, the ongoing growth and development of the, of the Village Area.
So you're not showing the housing on Lucy Street here as residential, you have it as Village Mixed.
Let's see.
And also-
Yes.
Given how you've got this Village Mixed, I mean, then I'm also gonna say that going up the side of, both sides of Amity Road should be called out as potential development areas.
Okay.
The end of Selden Street is shown as Village Mixed, currently that's all residentially developed?
At the top there.
And if you go to the top of Selden, where those small lots are?
Yeah.
And even behind the bowling alley, those are currently residences and-
Well, it doesn't-
-contemplating having them changed over to-
No, but-
No, no. It's, when we say mixed use, it doesn't mean every single property in the zone has to be mixed use. There can still be residential properties, it's just that a mix of uses is allowed within this zone.
Got it.
Can I just flip back real quick to the page 84, just a minor typo thing, under Create linkage to Nogatuck Trail, you say Bradley Street, excuse Bradley Road.
So Jeff, what's our obligations as a commission if, you know, we approve this revised zoning, Village zoning without revising our regs?
This comes first. This comes first.
So we're not obligated 100% to change it to these exact zones, but it's something that's a guide, more than, more or less?
Yeah.
You have to be able to, when you update your regulations, refer back to your town plan and say that what you're proposing is in compliance-
With your town.
-with the town plan.
Right.
The plan has to be the vision that you work with. I have more concerns in the sense with, you know, the fact that the Residential D District was laid out because of a subdivision back in 1898 that was 20 feet wide by 100 feet deep, which is why it had 4,000 square foot lots versus Residential C that had 25-foot wide versus 100 feet deep. And so you had two different things, and the way I read this is that you're going to the D standards, which I guess that's what the goal is, you want more density. So hypothetically, somebody could buy up a couple of the parcels on Landon Street, combine them, and make more, things more dense than they currently are. I mean, the other part of this is-
Not on Landon.
Yeah, on Landon, because those are 25 feet wide.
Right.
So if D, which is the minimum standard, which is 25, 20, well, 40 feet wide, hypothetically, if you bought up a couple of lots on Landon, enough of them, you could subdivide them back into the smaller parcels and have a denser concentration of houses in there, because D has a lower, you know, more dense standard than the C does. The other thing is-
Would that be so wrong?
Huh?
Would that be so wrong?
I'm not saying anything, I'm just saying that those are the-
No.
-things that have to, you know, they have to think about. That's why those things are, are in there, and obviously likewise why the B, residential B, no. Some of this that's in here is going under, where the gray extends up beyond Bradley, that's currently Residential BB, which is 15,000 square feet.
Hold on, what's that? Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, you have the potential for doing stuff, I mean, there's wetlands and whatnot in there. And then the other thing is that you did have, or the commission that was in place when the former town plan was done and the Village District was adopted, had opposition by residents who were down in the area to having have an architectural review, which under this you would now be imposing on them, when no other part of town has an architectural review.
Where does it say that we're imposing it?
Well, it says that when you have a Village District, under state statute, what a Village District does is it imposes the architectural review. And that's why when the Village District-
Which we have.
Right. And when the Village District was created, it specifically omitted all the residential districts because they didn't want to-
Architectural review.
-imput an architectural review on those residences where no one else in town had to have an architectural review.
Interesting.
So you may or may not get some pick back from the residents in that area.
I'd be interested to see what we get, because I think that, that same neighborhood wasn't happy when they put up those multifamily houses up there, which we had no control over. And I think they probably would have been pretty happy. I mean, our architectural review group isn't very, doesn't really have a lot to go with anyway, so hopefully we're gonna strengthen that. But I think that architectural review actually helps these neighborhoods. Absolutely.
I'm just giving you a little-
Yeah, I understand. I appreciate that.
...because none of you were present at that timeframe when that was done.
Well, we weren't sitting up here.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Right there. Okay.
But in the zoning aspect, we still have to get there. So, you know, even though you're talking about the D and the C and the BB, we still have some control over how we would, if at all, rezone. So we're just doing the concept right now.
Right. We haven't written the zoning regulations.
Right. And I think it's important to say that if we're looking to-
Time to do that.
Yeah, if we're looking to enhance, again, modestly, the density, then that may be a desirable goal. And there's lots of ways to accomplish it, so you can do that through the zoning.
I see in the, earlier, you had near-term, midterm, and long-term. We're under the Village Action Plan, it's only near-term. Any reason for that?
Right, well, these are just things we think could, you know, you could, if you aggressively went at it, get these done theoretically in three or four years. That there's enough time to, to do this, especially when you only have three or four items to consider, that once the plan is adopted, if you got right into it, started doing stuff in the village, that you could turn it around in that timeframe.
I have some comments at the, at the, where it says ongoing design priorities.
Mm-hmm.
You talk about develop bicycle lanes on key routes.
Mm-hmm.
I think that it should actually include 11467, Rimmon Road, and Sonya Road.
Okay.
We usually have to go on at least one of those to put some of this on the statement.
But that's not-
That's, yeah, that's not part of the village specifically.
You may want to include that in the Residential A.
Okay, so where we address the bicycle routes-
Yes.
-throughout the town?
Make sure that those are in there.
That would be good. Is this not the, again, is this too specific to say bicycle parking areas and things like that, or did we not put that in a P O C D? Is that too specific?
That's, that's getting pretty specific. I think you can, we could certainly make mention of adding-
I mean, you, I mean, you talk about, the next thing, you talk about improvements such as street furniture, trees, and sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
So-
Yeah, you could just simply add in things like bicycle parking. You're not, you're not at the point of picking where exactly it would go, because that would take additional analysis.
So on that paragraph where it says, "Create a pedestrian corridor on Lucy Street" So, on that paragraph where it says create a pedestrian corridor on Lucy Street, I don't think it should be just sites, I don't think it should just be Lucy Street. I think, I think it would be good to have that through the whole village district.
Okay.
I don't know why we would limit that.
Just say create pedestrian corridors.
Yeah, our thinking was that you, it would be a way to connect what goes on down on Selden Street all the way across the village and get you over to-
I, I get it, but I think that if we're going to do economic development, I think just, I mean, that's what was wrong with the other plan to me, that it only wanted to talk about Lucy Street.
Okay.
And we have a whole, whole area we're calling the village district. I, I would like to think Lucy Street isn't enough.
Okay.
So I think we should try to encourage on all those things. Pursue high priority sidewalk connections. Again, I think this should go through the whole village, the whole area, I don't think we should be picking out streets for this. I think that, you know, have this image of a lot of people walking around down there, so I don't know why we wouldn't try to get sidewalks everywhere.
Okay.
Especially since some of those-
Already done.
-that Lucy and Bradley or Litchfield are actually going to be done.
Yeah, right. The next one where it's referring to reconfigure on-street parking. I'm, I'm a little hesitant that we should take a whole bullet and refer to a private piece of property, Selden Street Plaza, Selden Plaza, I don't-
Okay.
We're not going to be able to reconfigure anything over there, it's private property. So I don't even know why we would have that on here. But I do like allow limited on-street parking on, well, again, I would say wherever it can be fit in the village district, I don't think it should just be those two roads. May not be able to go anyplace else, by the way, but I don't think most of those streets are any, any narrower than Lucy or Selden.
Okay.
And, and actually, if you go by this, then someone's going to come along and say we should take down the trees on Selden or Lucy to put parking in. All right. That's, that's it.
Do you need to, in that section, talk about-
Which, which one, which section?
Where, well, where you're kind of doing the reconfiguring the parking lot and whatnot, that's almost like a regulation where you might include in your regulations, you know, regulatory change to either encourage or direct reconfig, you know, the parking lot design.
You mean for Selden?
No, 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 in general, in general.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think it should be on here because that's what we're trying to do, but-
Right, but I'm just trying-
Then it is going to go into the regulation.
So you may, may want to say, you know, revise regulations to-
Well, isn't everything we're talking about proposing in here, conceptually, is going to go back to a regulation?
No, in, in a P O C D, different components go to different people, so everything isn't necessarily geared to your agency. I mean, we already had another section when it was geared in part to economic and development. So I think you kind of, in my own head, need to identify that so that you could then say, okay, this is the responsibility of this commission to do that, whereas, you know, some other things, you know, like the sidewalks and whatnot, that may be something that the selectmen pursue grants, as they've done in the past, to have sidewalks put in. So it starts to compartmentalize, you know, who's responsible for doing what.
Which we're going to do when we put together this, we're going to be doing that when we put the action agenda together. We're going to have responsible parties.
Who's going to be responsible?
And that's the next step, once we've got all our priorities and action items.
Because otherwise, we have to go back and go through this whole thing, not just this one section.
Yes.
All right. All right, anything else on that one?
No.
Okay.
Is that the only one you have in here? No.
Yeah, a couple more.
Natural resources.
Natural resources is probably the, the next one to go to. Again, a lot of information that we had in our fact book-
Did you just get that?
That was, that was last week. It's a lot of information and maps, again, well, basically in line with what we had in our fact books. On the last pa, and, yeah, on the last page, we, we have a number of items that are ongoing and near term because they tend to be relatively, relatively straightforward. You know, and, and again, these are things that are relatively common sense items. You know, continuing to, to protect vulnerable species and engaging with partners on surface water protection, you know, with the regional water authority, with DEEP, the Water Planning Council. Again, the, the water quality is very good for water bodies in, in Woodbridge, so. So that's not as much of an issue as, as in some other communities. But looking at protecting bridge lines and view sheds through land use regulations, something to be thinking about, kind of on an ongoing basis, and thinking about where those might be able to, might be able to be implemented. And working, I think most importantly, working with the regional water authority on, on the whole issue of potential development of class one and class two, and how we keep that protected going into the future. Again, keeping protection of wetlands in the forefront, as well as water quality. There are some items about, like adopting low impact development regulations and best management practices into, into the land use regulations, which done in a number, a number of towns have done that, there's been a couple of grant programs that have facilitated the development of those. So we're pretty, pretty familiar with that and have seen that work to good effect. And just avoiding patterns of development that would degrade scenic and environmental, environmental values. Open space conservation subdivision options, looking at, you know, the possibility of expanding scenic road designations where they might be appropriated in town. And finally, tackling policies and incentives to protect farmland. Again, as we mentioned earlier on in the process, while there's quite a bit of prime farmland or state, state significant farmland, in Woodbridge, a lot of that has just been developed over the past several hundred years. So trying to keep what's, what's still available protected. Also added in the idea here of, in sort of a promoting and preserving current agribusiness in the town, of having a local farmer's market in, in an accessible location within the village to be determined, but that could potentially open up, you know, increased access, having closer proximity to the population density in New Haven and the Westville area. That could definitely be a, a positive for that. So again, as I said-
Now, should we, now, should, other than saying that, should we get more specific on that?
On the, like, an actual site for the farmer's market?
Yeah. I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking, it's not a-
It's reversing what you've normally been asking this evening, by the way, but, you know, it's a good question.
There have been businesses down in the, the village area that have asked about having a farmer's market, so I think it may just, you know, if you open the door and say, hey, we'd like to have one, and they have businesses that are already thinking about doing it, they'll do it.
I was actually thinking about the green space and where the senior housing is, so.
But wherever it might be in that village area, I think that the idea is to sort of enhance that commercial opportunity, that's another way of doing it.
So I wasn't trying to get too specific, but it's general enough.
Village district.
It's called gray area for me.
I didn't want to change the problem.
You're right. That was very good, Chris. All right.
All right.
I just had a question on the strength and protection for wetlands, and that, either section in there? That's all by state statute. And the local regulations mirror the model regulations that are produced by the state.
Mm-hmm.
And they are current and up to date.
Okay, well, I think maybe then what we should have put in here was, you know, you know, continue-
And I mean, the idea of no net loss, I mean, the regulations, the way they are written, there are certain things which can occur as a right in a wetland, so depending on what it is, there's things that can happen.
Okay.
Of course, we're not in a position where, as a town, we could be more restrictive than the state, by the way.
Right. You can't be anywhere-
That's what I'm saying, but that, I mean, in some cases, in different areas, you can be. But since they are, you know, first jurisdiction-
Right, but I'm just saying, the statement institute a regulatory policy of no net loss.
No, I understand, that we should just be consistent with the state regulations which control.
Right, and so just questioning the way that's written because I, to me, it doesn't-
I think it's incorrect.
Also, under preserve local and scenic characters, what, what about, like, pet peeve, stone walls?
Stone walls.
And again, I go back to the comment that someone made at one of our charrettes saying, make sure we still have our narrow windy roads-
Right.
-through town. So I don't know, I'm not saying that goes in here, but the stone walls, I don't-
No, the stone walls, yeah, that can, that could definitely go in there. There are towns that have, that have, sometimes even in their road regulations have, you know, specific requirements that stone walls be protected, so, yeah, that's, that's definitely something.
And, and what about, I know we have some stuff already, but like, protecting certain vistas?
Preserve local scenic character, considering the bridge lines.
Where are you, where are you looking? Oh.
It's a view shed.
View shed.
So, again, I know I'm the one that's avoiding being specific, but this would actually help the town, to be specific. It's not business or commercial, so does it make sense for us to? It seems very vague.
Okay.
But I'm just throwing it out, I'm not saying X, I'm just saying, does it make sense? I mean, how does Guilford determine what their vistas are that they want to save?
Well, I, I don't know specifically about Guilford, but, you know, a lot of towns will do some sort of site survey and identify exactly where they are. I've certainly seen that done.
I mean, I would think we would want to do something like that, no?
I wouldn't want to be specific here, because at the end of the day, it's going to be, if it's regulation, so long as it fits, regulation can fit within the framework.
I don't think a regulation saves views, and I don't think-
Well, it says, the way it's written, it talks in terms of regulatory protection.
Yeah, you can, you can write zoning regulations to that effect.
One of the nicest aspects of that would be of these wonderful century old trees that, you know, really are in good shape, and, you know, you really want to encourage that, it's beyond stone walls, I mean, it's existing flora. And I'm not sure what other places may have done with that, but I do think as, as I run around town, I look at some of these wonderful specimen trees that have, you know, really grown up correctly, and they're in good shape, I think we'd want to encourage that.
You could often have that as, as like a site plan requirement, a tree over a certain caliper, if you have those, you have to map those.
So you're thinking that's a reg, but I'm just thinking about the consistency of the P O C D. Could you just talk about-
Just talk about it.
-enhancement of vistas, including but not limited to-
Right.
-fill in the blank.
I mean, one of the things that Guilford's regs have as far as stone walls, and I'll bet you it does include trees, just like you said, they say that you can, you can develop that property, but you can't go in there and plow everything down.
Right, we talk about clear cutting, no one-
Yeah, it's clear cutting.
Adapt your building, buildings to work around stone walls and-
Specimen trees is usually the-
Trees. I think that'd be great.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I, I think that's really, I mean, I think this is like, almost one of the most important sections because we're trying, this is what's going to keep the rural character of town. The economic part is going to go after possibly building up our tax base, but we're saying we're willing to do development there, and so I think this is a pretty important spot.
Okay.
Chapter, I also have a cup, notes written up on chapter six, open space.
Okay.
Happens that the person that wrote it is here, so she may want to chime in.
Okay.
But one of the, the thing that I'm seeing here the most is they're, from KUPOP, they're questioning classifications, and that's, this is a different set of classifications than what KUPOP had used. Now, I'm not suggesting that we should, yeah, I've moved on. So I'm not suggesting that I'm agreeing with all the things that KUPOP's suggesting, but I figure since you changed them from their, their recommendations, you can justify and explain yourself to them, to some point.
To them?
Yeah, well, you could explain it to us, too. But, so I'm, I'm just curious about why, what, what went on there, how we did that.
We-
I think we actually kind of have spoken about this, but-
Yeah, we took what was proposed by KUPOP and the Conservation Commission, have tried to, to work it in as best, as best we could, and over the last, last few days. So I'm just trying to look for specific, specific items that we could discuss.
Well, like, it says municipal protected, but that refer, basically refers to like KUPOP category one, and then like state, RWA protected, class one, class two, that's KUPOP category four.
Okay.
Municipal managed, KUPOP category two and three. Oh, and by the way, you have Beecher Miss, you may want to check the classification of the Beecher World School property.
Okay.
I'm looking at black and white, so I can't tell you, but-
All right.
Wallace property?
Wallace Street.
Wallace Street. Yeah, no, just don't hold that up. Were you at the last one? I said without lifting. You didn't do that, did you?
I didn't do it.
Just checking. I didn't think so. It's an office building. Yeah, we talked about it the last. Also, the, your acreage is different than what KUPOP's acreage is, your totals.
Okay, I'll check that number. That should, that should be consistent.
And then the town that's conservation partners collectively, they hold over 28, 2,854 acres, KUPOP is saying gets category one, 974.01 acres.
Okay.
So you, you might need to cross check this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we spent a lot of time breaking out the acreage.
And they were the opposite of what we're talking about, and they were very specific.
So I'll have to go through the spreadsheet again.
Well, this is just an inventory. Also, you on, on number four, you call it parks and recreation, we don't actually have a parks department.
Okay.
We do have a recreation department.
Yeah, we must have just-
Or park and facilities.
Made a typo there, because we do have it as recreation department.
Or park and rec facilities, you know, parks department, and then we're-
Okay.
Okay, well, it's just-
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's a small-
That's right.
Probably a first of all to play on the balance, because it's very confusing what the town manages versus what's in front.
Yeah.
It's a lot.
Okay.
And, and then the only other thing, again, it's probably going to be best if you talk to them directly.
Yeah.
Number seven, I just wanted to commission up the screen, on number seven, framework for open space acquisitions.
Mm-hmm.
This is not what KUPOP and- This is not what KUPOP and the Conservation Commission was recommending.
Okay.
So again, I'm not saying that what they recommend is what you have to do.
Mm-hmm.
I think you just have to have some reasoning.
Yeah, absolutely.
So everybody comes back on the same page.
Right. Okay.
All right.
The chapter on sustainability, we were wrapping that up, we got some comments back just today from the Energy Task Force, a couple of different areas, and I've just received them a little while ago, around five o'clock, so I haven't had a chance to really digest them.
And where do these comments come from?
The energy, the town's energy task force.
Oh.
So those were forwarded on to me.
So could you also pass that on to Chris and myself, so we can let the commission see them?
Yep, absolutely. Like I said, just came in. So there's probably going to be some more changes that I want to make to this, depending on what comes out of those comments.
So are they planning on coming and giving us a input? Who is that?
The staff person who's coordinating it is Betsy Yagla, and I'm not sure if they had any plans to come and present testimony here.
Okay, so if you're their designated representative, you probably need to come and explain what they want to do.
Right, yeah, so, well, we're going to go over those tomorrow morning, and...
Yeah, you could send this to us, though.
Yep.
And under sustainability, you know, the Catholic police chief would...
I'd speak with you about the disaster preparedness.
We've already reached out to him about a week ago.
Why is management and improved town trails and sustainability as opposed to open space?
Well, mainly because it promotes a more sustainable lifestyle, more walking and, you know, biking options. That's why we included in there. It's probably something that we could cross-reference across both chapters. Yeah, that's a good point. So again, we're going to, we have some additional feedback that we have to process from the task force. They were generally positive comments, so from my initial review of them. A lot of this has to deal with, again, some common sense stuff, such as, you know, keeping up on energy incentive programs that might be able to help, you know, home and business energy efficiency, engaging and educating folks on the importance of protecting air and water, energy conservation opportunities that may come up. There's a number of programs out there that the town may be able to, may be able to take advantage of. Again, the disaster preparedness, we were talking to, or we had put out contacts with the police department, so we're probably going to have to revise that a little bit before next week. You know, waste management, labeling multi-stream recycling stations, making those clear. There's so many things, for example, such as air quality, which are really hard to address at the local level, because it's such a more regional issue, but there are still things to do, such as low-impact development provisions can be a particularly useful town measure to address these. Things like reducing idling of town vehicles, looking at different energy savings and operational impacts that you might be able to achieve. Energy conservation is always a big point, you know, getting the message out to customers, some other ideas such as doing a town-wide conservation competition, developing energy performance standards for municipal buildings that may be built in the future, as well as expanding recycling and composting options. Getting more into sort of long-term items, one of the things that we've come across is this issue of, a lot of towns have had to deal with wood burning for heat by residents, trying to promote more modern clean burning wood stoves and fireplaces that are on the market now. In some towns, there have been efforts undertaken to sort of incentivize the salvage and deconstruction of older homes as they're taken down, and trying to reuse and recycle the materials. Number of businesses that make a pretty good living off of that industry.
There are some towns that actually like set up these little buildings, like at their landfill areas, or non landfill dump areas, and people just can go in and then, I don't actually where the money goes to, but go for the local charity.
Okay.
There's one up on the Cape that we've been to, it's called the Stock Exchange, and there's like a ton of stuff in there.
Yeah.
And...
It's a place in Hamden, too, that handles that type of stuff, too.
Yeah, so, but I mean, like even the place up on the Cape I've seen where you can go in there and people have thrown out like sheets and blankets and things like that, and they've salvaged them and they give them to people.
Yeah.
Urban Miners doesn't do that kind of stuff.
No, they're strictly materials.
And they're not selling blankets and sheets and stuff?
No.
So I'm a big believer in repurposing.
Yeah.
Especially locally.
And protecting the town's forest assets touches a little bit on what we were talking about a little while ago, about, you know, doing a tree inventory of critical areas, identifying those trees that are critical to maintaining the scenic character of the town and managing those. And then again, just, you know, local incentives for using renewables, energy systems, you know, there may be some possibilities of doing local incentives, such as property tax measures as well. So again, we're going to polish this up a little bit, look at what the Energy Task Force had to provide to us tonight, and, you know, kind of present that again next week as probably the last item.
Under the wood burning, you may or may not be aware that there's a town ordinance that prohibits any new, what do we call them, outdoor...
Outdoor wood burning.
Outdoor wood burning.
Wood burning.
Really? No idea. For wood or for like leaves?
No, wood burning.
The boilers that actually heat the houses, but they burn the wood outside.
Outside.
Wood or anything else anybody can put in the fire.
Wire lamps.
That's it.
Wow.
Tires.
No.
Gosh.
Really?
They do. Very regulated by D E P regulations, too.
And finally, we had originally had historic and cultural resources as kind of a separate topic, but because there was so much sort of connection with community facilities and resources in general, we put them together as one unified chapter.
As I said, I'm moving on to sustainability.
We have more to talk about, yeah, that's, sure.
Well, I didn't read this, but does it talk anything about in here encouraging solar? Do we address anything with wind?
We don't specifically call out the different types of energy systems, we simply mention that, you know, identify gaps in existing programs or barriers to business and homeowner investment in renewable energy systems. That's kind of how we've got that covered there, rather than calling out specific, different types of renewable energy systems. So I don't know if we want to be...
Yeah, I'm not a big, as you know, I'm not a big fan of property tax advantages.
Okay.
Since you can get a solar system now, and the government pays already 50% of it, I don't know if Librarch has to give any more to that.
Okay. The historic and community resources section, really the historic section is just a discussion of the properties and the history of the town, is more, you know, for educational purposes until we get into the specific action items. We did an extensive amount of outreach in terms of the community and municipal facilities and operations, you know, including the police and fire, the Department of Public Works, and the, you know, the level of efforts that they have going on at this point. Looked at sewer and septic systems where they exist. The town library was clearly identified as a major hub of the community and a very important institution, so we spent some time discussing that and some of the issues that the library's facing from a facility standpoint. Again, we had a very good meeting with, we had a joint meeting with youth services and some of the other sort of social service departments and staff to go over things such as the senior center and the youth services and what's being provided now, to sort of educate what we see going on in the future, and took a look, of course, very importantly, at the Woodbridge and the Amity Regional School Districts to see how their enrollments have been trending and changes that have been made in terms of the facilities over the years, and what sort of the projected enrollments going forward were going to be. Once we get into the action plan...
Do you know when you sent that? I'm sorry.
Sent that? Oh, that may have been...
Historic and community resources?
Not off the top of my head, which state that was.
I want to say it was right around the last meeting.
Yeah, I think that's probably correct.
I believe I printed them and I handed them out at the last meeting.
Is that what you handed them?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixth.
I think I did copies for you at the last meeting.
Yeah, I was just looking for it online.
Did I already send it to you?
Thank you. Sorry.
Going to a hard copy, Jeff?
No, I'm good, thank you.
One of the things that we had identified earlier in our look at demographics is, of course, the aging of the population, and trying to not only work with residents, but also some of the neighboring communities, to come up with different innovative senior services that, you know, as the baby boomer generation starts to age a little bit more, they may not be as attracted to your sort of traditional senior center programs. So it's worthwhile to take a look at what services may be more attractive to them and how those could be implemented. Youth services, again, continuing to coordinate with Bethany and Orange through the B O W Collaborative, and trying to, you know, incorporate different prevention programs for various teen issues, develop some more economic development opportunities, improving communications between the youth job bank and the, and local businesses, and trying to help teens in particular in that regard. Again, the library is a critical resource in the community, as pointed out by numerous folks to us, and we need to keep that as a priority, continue to invest in the building maintenance and the improvements going forward. When we did some research into sort of the state of the center building, there were a number of conditions that were raised that we go into a little bit more in the text, where we discuss the building itself. And since that's, again, such an important facility for the town and is so heavily used, prioritizing the needed investments that we've identified through our discussions with different folks in the town would be an important near-term action step. From the charrettes, one of the items that was brought up on a couple of different occasions was the reuse of the old firehouse, and, you know, at this point, we don't have, you know, a specific plan or idea, I think that facility could be used for a number of different uses, and it's sort of worth continuing to have the town discussion about what the best future use is for that going forward. There's a number of historic designations in the town, you know, it's important to keep looking at the inventory of historic properties that you have here, identifying gaps in preservation efforts, and trying to find places where additional preservation designations may be appropriate for other properties. Demographics and enrollment trends, you know, need to be looked in further, because those really have an impact on what sort of community facilities and services you're going to be needing. So looking at, you know, why school enrollments have changed and what the trends are indicative of the future, and what the potential costs to the town could be under different growth scenarios. There are a number of towns now that are looking at this exact issue of how to manage what their projected enrollment trends are showing them, in terms of what facilities to keep online, where to add capacity. The Amity Teen Center, we have an item in here about, you know, assessing options for locations that might provide greater accessibility to the schools and to the residential areas. We had the idea of, you know, providing some additional outdoor picnic grounds on the town green, finding, you know, an appropriate site somewhere within the center of town for additional facilities for picnics and community events, and really putting a priority on upgrading where necessary, the very important public facilities, especially, well, including recreational areas, we wanted to make sure that that was encompassed in this as well, and not just covered in the open space and recreation chapter. So those were the action items that we had for this section. I don't know if there's...
The enrollment trends, we made a near-term action, not a midterm.
Okay.
Something that is, we're going to have to take into consideration as a town.
Okay.
In terms of future needs.
Okay.
You do realize that the Teen Center owns that building?
They own the building, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or it'd be a good retail area.
Mixtures.
They're actually going to do well on that building if they ever sell it. It's happened since then.
Teen Center. Good. All right, so we'll work on making these changes and the ones we've already compiled from the meeting on the 25th for next week, so we have sort of a complete set of...
On the 9th, we have a meeting on the 9th.
Meeting on the 9th, right. Good. All right, so we'll work on making these changes and the ones we've already compiled from the meeting on the 25th for next week. So we have sort of a complete set of.
On the ninth. We have a meeting on the ninth.
Meeting on the ninth, right.
Okay.
And get those together so we can start getting ready for the end of the.
And are you going to try to get those out ahead of us?
Yep. Yeah. End it, end it this week would be what we're shooting for, so.
All right, cool.
All right.
Anything else? We're good?
All right.
Thank you, Michael. Correspondence received. I'm moving, I'm skipping a few things. Is that okay? You know, one of the things I actually forgot and then remembered, but the discussion on the marijuana moratorium. So does it make sense to put the information that Peggy sent us back in our email again? Take a look at it and then try to look at that at the next, next month?
First one was just opened, I understand.
And there's a lot more that a past moratorium says.
The actual store. It's on the front page of the paper. Okay, so correspondence received.
Stone Creek.
Summer 2014 issue of the Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agency Quarter Newspaper. This is, this is what I'm, this is for us.
That's just weird.
Yeah, all right, okay, fine. We have approval in minutes. Right. So, do you want, do I have a chance to look at it? Do you want to put this off to the next meeting? Is that, is that a problem?
There's no requirement to file approved ones. There's a deadline.
Okay, cool. So we're going to do it next month?
Next week?
I don't think we can do it next week. Next week's a special meeting, isn't it?
Right. What, the minutes? Oh, we'll just do it next month.
Okay, is our motion adjourned?
Still moving.
Second?
Second.
Everybody moved it and everybody moved second.
Well, you know, they all say it together.
Yes, yes. They're so excited.
Listen to replay.